Last day of fall before summer comes tomorrow. When I will, yeah, I'm just, this is an old trick. If you throw the wrong season out, you want to make sure people are hearing you, so. But it's the last day of spring before summer comes. And happy Father's Day, but without mothers, we would be not fathers, so happy every day for people. Today, we're here for the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging Committee. We have three items. I'm going to wait on the aging item, which is aging number one. Mr. Wesson arrives, so if you don't mind, and on the other two items there, I'm going to go for the item number three first. So I'm joined by Mr. Reyes. So, Mr. Clerk, are you ready to roll?
Yes.
Okay, so we can call this meeting in order. Start with item number three.
Item number three is an appeal filed by Daniel Wright on behalf of the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance, brought under California Public Resources Code Section 21151(c), the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, from the Board of Recreation and Park Commissioners' determination that a proposed project at the Autry National Center was exempt from SEQA environmental review for various improvements for the property located at forty-seven-hundred west, I'm sorry, forty-seven-hundred Western Heritage Way. This item is also scheduled for council on June twenty-first, two thousand and eleven.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could I ask the city attorney to explain what's before us on item three?
Well, what's before us is there was an action taken by the Department of Recreation and Parks Board of Commissioners, and part of that action, which was taken on May twentieth, included a notice of exemption regarding SEQA review. I believe there's a coalition, the Mount Washington Homeowners Association and the Southwest Museum has filed an appeal challenging the SEQA review. And there was a motion by council members Reyes and Weezer to-
That's on number two, but item three was what we have in front of us right now. I'm going to call on Recreation and Parks staff to make their case, and then I will have public comment on it.
Yes, that's correct. However, the point I was trying to make is that the council motion, under Charter Section 245, the city council exercised jurisdiction over the Board of Recreation and Parks Commission's action, and part of that stemming from that, the appeal was filed after the 245 motion.
Which means what?
Which means that we have two things that are pending.
Right.
One of which is challenging, which is item number two on today's agenda, which is challenging the board's action, and then item number three is the appeal filed by the coalition and the homeowners association challenging the SEQA review. And that's what item three is.
And as a city attorney, you recommend that we take item number three first?
I would, I think it's important that you take the appeal first and then take item number two, the challenge of the board action.
Right.
However, I do believe that the department has documents they wanted to submit in response to the appeal, and it is en route. Staff is bringing the document here, so.
Okay. All right, so if, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I know, for the record, I'll call on you, sir, you're out of order. You're out of order.
Sir, you-
You're out of order. You're welcome to speak at public comment, and also fill a card. You're out of order. Thank you.
You can correct it later, sir.
Sergeant, if this isn't another abruption, please escort him out. I want to run a good meeting like I did the last one. I want everybody to be heard here. And when you come to the microphone, you state your name, and you tell me what you think, Mr. Reyes, and I will listen, Mr. Wesson. I don't need it, and we're in a smaller room today, so we have to be cautious on our conversations. If you need to talk to somebody, you could go outside. Would I ask the Recreation of Parks to come forward, please, right now?
... The Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance and Charles Fisher historian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, on this particular item, give us a little overview on this type of what you call challenge to the action, and then we're going to have public comment after that, and then you could come back to the center table.
Regina Habs, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks. Also with me, I have Mike Cho, who is our Superintendent of our Planning, Construction and Maintenance Division. For this particular project, as we had stated before, as far as for the authority for the Recreation and Parks Board, they had done everything that they were legally required to do. They had approved the recommendation and for the Autry Museum to be able to move forward on this project with the Prop eighty-four funds that it's been granted by the state. As far as the SEQA appeal, we are filing a letter with the city clerk, which we have no comment on the appeal. That is not under our purview at this point in time.
Has it ever had an appeal to anything like this in any project in the park system in the past?
Yeah, we've had, yes, we have had, I wouldn't say similar, but we have had people or individuals appeal our SEQA process on-
But educate me, give me an idea. Was it about?
The last one that I recall mostly was on sports field lighting. It was regarding-
Sports field lighting.
The glare to the community, that sort of thing.
And these were for grant monies that were coming, or?
It was Proposition K funded, yes.
Proposition K funded, and then what ultimately happened on those?
We're actually still, we haven't completed, we've taken the, we haven't completed the environmental document yet for that.
Right. But there's nothing like this where it's in an interior of a building?
To my knowledge, we've never had any, anything similar to this as far as it being contained within a building.
Right. Thank you. I'll call you back up. Any questions, Mr. Reyes?
No.
So, public comment, we're going to have one minute, yes, Adam, city attorney?
Councilman LeBange, just for the record, to be clear, the appeal was filed by Daniel Wright on behalf of the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance and Charles Fisher, a historian, individually.
Right. Mr. Wright-
I spoke when I said the coalition.
Okay, Mr. Wright was hired by the Mount Washington Association?
It says-
He's a paid advocate for them?
That I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll ask when he comes up. Okay. Thank you very much. So, one-minute comment, if you need a little extra, we're both here, but we're going to try to do this, everybody give a chance to speak. Leon Level, we'll fill the cards out here. Luke, I want to say Swetland, excuse me. And I don't have these in order, they go back and forth. Tina Miller and Dr. Williams, thank you. We're joined by Mr. Wesson.
My question-
All right, Mr., would you come to the table, please, and state your name?
Good morning. My name is Daniel Wright, I'm representing the appellant here. This is an-
Ask the question of the chair.
It's a SEQA appeal.
Okay.
So, in a SEQA appeal, I just want to make sure that, I understand that you're going to, I guess, take public comment for one minute from the public, but because it's an appeal and it's a hearing, there needs to be an opportunity for both the appellant and the applicant to give presentations. And I asked staff earlier, how long were we going to be given to give our presentation? And normally in SEQA appeals, Mr. Reyes may know, because he's had them before plum, it's usually, you know, ten, twelve minutes for each side to present their cases, because it's a hearing. It's not just public comment under the Brown Act, it's a hearing. We have a right to be heard and to present-
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to dismiss everybody. I asked the city attorney to come to this microphone here and either affirm what Mr. Wright said, or tell us this is a public comment hearing, because that's what I need some direction on. This is the first time in our committee has ever had that here.
I don't believe our SEQA attorney, Tim McWilliams, is here yet.
Okay, we'll call that.
But I would simply state that it might be better to have the appellant speak first, and then have the city speak, and then take public comment.
Okay. Let me just ask Mr. Wesson a question. How are you, Mr. Wesson?
I'm on top of the world.
All right, good. We have an item number one in there, which is, you were interested in, and we held it for you. We could dispose of item one as we wait for this city attorney to cross Main Street.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Why don't we do that?
So, we'll go back. Everybody take another breath, we'll get confirmed, and then we'll move forward correctly. All right, Mr. City Clerk, would you please call item number one up?
Certainly. Item number one is a Los Angeles Department on Aging, LADOA, pardon me, report relative to acceptance of grant funds from the California Department of Aging, approval of the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve area plan update to the two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve area plan, and the execution of proposed senior services contracts for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve. This item was continued from June fourteenth Arts Meeting. This item is also scheduled for council for June twenty-first, two thousand and eleven.
James.
Good morning, James. Department of Aging with me is Jacob Wood, Contract Manager for the Department of Aging. We're here on the item requesting authority to accept fifteen and a half million dollars of grant funds from the California Department of Aging, and we seek authority to execute contracts with the selected awardees of our RFP for senior services. This is not only for our multipurpose centers, but for our citywide senior services as well. We've had an opportunity to meet with the staff of CD-ten, Councilmember Wesson's office, and I think we've worked out the concerns. We will be working with them on a regular basis to ensure that the recommended provider in that area complies with all the terms of their contract, and if failing compliance with that, we'll take the appropriate actions. Standard language in our contract includes the right to terminate contracts with thirty days written notice. We also have provisions for corrective action plans so that the contractor has the opportunity to address any deficiencies during the course of the year, so that it's fair to both sides.
Okay.
Mr. Wesson?
Mr. Chair, I did have serious concerns where, or the people that I represent had serious concerns where related to that contract, and I will indicate that we did meet, and we think that the department did a good job in putting safeguards in place to ensure that the seniors receive the type of services that they deserve. So where it relates to this element of item one, I'm comfortable.
Very good.
But it's also my, yeah, there's always a but. It's my, it's my understanding, something that I found out since we continued the item, that there's some concerns where it relates to approximately sixty employees that are Wreckin' Park employees, and so if I could have somebody come up from, well, see, Regina's here, if we could talk about that, because I'm, I do have concerns about them, and I want to make sure we can do everything within our power to keep them hold. So, we've had some discussions where it relates to this item. So, you know, given, now that you know the way that I feel, what kind of responses could you recommend that would elevate my comfort level?
Regina Habs, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks. Actually, there are seventy-two employees that are affected by this as of July-
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Where'd I get sixty? Ed, you gave me sixty?
Actually, as of July first, Recreation and Parks would not be providing the senior nutrition and social services at two of our sites, which is, they're, these grant funds are through the Department of Aging, these are federal grant funds. What has happened is that our budget has been reduced so that we are no longer providing this service. Along with that, we have seventy-two employees that are affected. The majority of those employees, I'd say about ninety-nine percent of them are part-time employees, which means they are as-needed employees. What we are looking to do is that there are two things. One, under the nonprofits, if the council approves this item, then under the nonprofits, who will be coming into those two sites to provide these services, under the Service Worker Retention Program, they would be able to reach out to those employees to try to offer them employment. Now, the other thing is, for Recreation and Parks, also since we're coming upon our busiest season, which is the summer season, we are also looking to try to hold on to some of those employees to provide those summer programs. The issue is going to come after the summer. First of all, we cannot retain all of the employees, because the majority of these employees are delivery drivers. We only use these employees for this particular program. We have no other reason to have them provide other services for us. And those employees make over twenty-one dollars an hour. Under the Service Worker Retention Ordinance, I believe the maximum they would be paid is about fifteen dollars an hour, so that is going to be an issue. We have been trying to inform the employees about this was coming. We also, too, kind of have had our hands tied, because we've also been meeting with their union representative to try to get this resolved. We cannot make the promise that we can retain all these employees, and we do not know what would happen to them past the summer season.
Let me stop and ask you a question. When you say retain, are you, do you mean retain at the current level of salary, or just retain them period? They can't be absorbed, I mean, we're coming on our busy season, they can't be absorbed to do some other function?
They can be. What we're talking about is for the delivery drivers. For the other employees, they're in classifications that we can use them for other programs and services.
So what do we do with the delivery drivers?
Delivery drivers, these are the options. One, either they try to seek employment through the nonprofits that the Department of Aging has selected, and hopefully council approves, so that they can try to get employment through them. But again, the bottom line is, they will not be making the same salary that they're making right now.
I get that.
For Recreation and Parks, we can try to change them over to classifications such as recreation assistance. However, again, that's going to be about a third salary drop, thirty-three percent salary drop, because those employees make about fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour versus twenty-one dollars that these employees are currently making.
So let me make sure I got this straight. So right now, the delivery drivers make twenty, approximately-
Over twenty-one dollars an hour.
They make over twenty-one dollars an hour. If they were to catch on with one of the nonprofits, they'd make approximately fifteen. If they transferred as a rec-
Recreation and Parks, right.
Assistant or whatever, they'd make over fourteen.
About fourteen, fifteen.
So, you see that there will be some kind of a drop in pay?
Yes. And the majority of these seventy-plus employees are the delivery drivers.
The majority, what is that, fifty, forty?
No, what I'm saying is about, I'd say probably about thirty-
Are.
-of our delivery drivers. So, what we can do, and the thing is this as well, again, as I stated, Wreckin' Parks can try to use these employees for our summer programming, but we don't know what will happen after the summer, because-
But aren't we having, I mean, and nothing is certain, but aren't there negotiations going on now with bargaining units that might ensure that you have some more money in your budget? I mean, we couldn't say for sure for positive, but if these negotiations are successful, would that occur?
There could be. However, we don't think that we will be made whole. One of the things that we've been talking to the CAO's office is that, for our budget beginning July first, there are two things happening. One is that our budget was reduced for furlough days, which was almost twelve million dollars was cut from our budget. And the other thing is from this particular account, which is called as salaries as needed, two million dollars was cut from that particular account. So we already have an issue in that particular account, which is where these employees are paid from. The other item is that with the coalition agreements and other agreements that may be coming into play, we do not yet know what the difference will be between what we're going to have to pay under that versus what was taken out of our budget. So we expect to have some unfunded amount, but we do not know what that amount is at this time. Also, too, just to let you know, one of the things that we've done, we did last year, the current fiscal year that's coming to an end, one of the things we did, we were supposed to lay off some employees last July. We did lay off some of the employees, but we also retained some of the employees who are also coalition-represented employees. We are right now, we went to our board and created some positions so that we could retain some of those employees, and we did not have to lay off all the employees we were directed to lay off. So we've adjusted our budgets to try to hold on to some of those employees, and we're still holding on to them at this time. So this makes it a little bit more challenging for us, because as I stated, there are some employees right now in our department that we are still paying for, and we did not have the authority and so forth, and we moved monies around to try to retain those employees, and they're still with us.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, you know, it's tough times, Mr. Chair, and I'll try to wrap this up. It's tough times for everybody, and I get that, and I applaud the creativity of your department in trying to provide services that the people of Los Angeles want, need, and expect. But I do have a serious concern where it relates to these employees, and I think we have, I mean, my guess is that the lion's share of those employees are part-time, permanent part-time, they're hoping to become permanent, full-time employees one day, and we don't want to take... Now, you're an attorney, you're supposed to be able to-
That's the second warning, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, we might have to throw-
No.
Sergeant, keep an eye on you.
We won't, we won't throw you out, we'll just throw your phone out.
Yeah, okay, eliminate his phone.
So much for mood music.
But anyway, what, there has to be a way that we can track these seventy-two employees and, and, Mr. Chair, if we could ask that we monitor where they are, you know, who decided to stay with the city. It would appear that there will be enough jobs, maybe not at the salary level, that some of these employees are making, but I'd like to afford them the opportunity to do that if they want to, but we should track them, and at a later date, it should come back to this committee, so that we can find out where they are, what kind of financial situation we're in now, and if there's a game plan to, for, to retain them permanently, and if there would be a way to adjust the salaries of those that have taken reductions in pay.
Councilmember, just one more thing I'd like to add, is that, you know, we're hoping that a majority of the employees will seek employment with the nonprofits, because for the seniors, they've already developed a relationship with these employees, and they're used to seeing those employees, their faces and so forth, and so we would like, if they continued under the program that they're, under the, that the nonprofit would be running, that would allow that to happen. If they continue with Recreation and Parks, they no longer would be doing those programs and services-
No, I get that, I get that, and they're going to have to make a choice. I mean, for some of them, I don't know, how long are the contracts with the nonprofits? How long are they?
Four years.
Four years? So, I mean, people are going to have to say, well, this is an opportunity for me to maybe be guaranteed work for four years, whereas the other way, I'm kind of taking, I mean, I get that. And there has to be something to be said about their relationship with the seniors. I know my mother, when she was able, would go to all of these different senior centers, and she knew them all. So I mean, so I'm not discounting that, but I want to be fair to the seventy-two people, and I just don't want us to vote on this and then forget about them.
Well, here's what I'd like to suggest. I think I'd like to ask, since this is the last day of spring, and in three months, it will be fall, maybe in September meeting, we ask Recreation of Parks to come back and give an overview, not just of this transitional program, but other, all those people who support you in the summer, just where that employment is, what the challenges are, any buyback time that could be made, and get a report from them on their staffing at that time. Does that, does that take care of your suggestion?
Yeah, that's fine with me, but I think that I would like to, you know, have a rep from the union come up and give their read-
Well, okay, hold on just a second. Let me have Mr. Reyes speak, and then I'll get back to on that, just in case we've got everybody here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Wesson covered a lot of my questions, but I do want to drill down a little bit more. As we were going through the budget process, it was considered a no-layoff budget at one time, but everything moves, issues come up, and we remain fluid. But, Mr. Chair, perhaps before September, if we could have a report back on the more specific information about facilities, in terms of which facilities are being impacted, and where they are located, where are they exactly located? Because I know these contracts have different purposes, different sites function differently, so where those facilities are located is something that I think would be very important for us to know as council members for the whole city. We look at the current city employees, if we can be more specific as to which employees in which facility is being impacted, not by name, but by number, so that way we respect their privacy. That'll give us a sense of who's impacted where. As Mr. Wesson has indicated, many of our constituents develop relationships, and you alluded to this, with seniors, and working with seniors, working with certain city employees, moving them around, or losing that relationship can mean a lot to certain seniors, so just understanding that dynamic would be important.
Well, there's two facilities for Recreation and Parks. One is the Wilkinson Center, which is located in Council District Five, which is Councilmember Smith's district, and the other one is Felicia Mayhood, which is in Council District Eleven for Rosendahl. For the seventy-two employees, if you'd like, I can just give you in general the classifications and the numbers of employees, if that's what you would like.
If I can have that in writing and a report back, to doing it, for right now, if Mr. Chair would allow for us to get that information, so that way we could respond to our constituents.
What I think would be helpful, maybe even the start of the summer, how you ramp up with a variety of employees and the challenges of classifications, and then maybe at the end of the summer, have a-
Right, right. We can have a summary impact, but at the outset, let's, give us a chance to be able to respond. In terms of the movement, in terms of, are there going to be lateral, or are there going to be reductions in classifications? I heard already that the drivers themselves make so much, and they're, the need for that function is limited, so you're addressing that as well.
Yeah, what generally happens in, for Recreation and Parks, of course, for the summer, is that that's when we ramp up our hiring for part-time employees, because that's when we offer our most of our programs and services. And in the fall, we already, we start ramping down.
Right.
And so as I say, so these employees right now, we could use them for the summer, but there are other employees besides these employees who we would not be continuing past the summer.
Right. I think just a significant, if we can get this report back sooner than later, if we can find out which city employees, other city employees impacted by the contracts, how many of them will be retained or relocated, so that we have a sense of the movement, the shift that is being proposed because of our budget issues.
Well, one of the things, too, for these, for all of our part-time employees, they don't have seniority. So, what the union has been referring to as permanent employees, first of all, none of our employees are permanent, not even the full-timers.
Right.
They were talking about the part-timers that have attained halftime status. But what happens is, like I state, we, after the summer, there will be other employees as well that will be reduced.
But we see that in writing, how soon can this report be done?
Well, as far as what's going to happen-
No, no, no. How soon can we get a report back in writing to this committee?
Oh, we can do that very quickly.
Okay, great.
In two weeks, or you need-
Two weeks is fine.
Two weeks. So at the next meeting, we'll schedule, just for information, an issue that relates to ramping up staffing, all staffing, also the challenges you've had the last twenty-four months in the reduction of your budget, and then partnerships, because I know with childcare, you used to provide childcare, now we have community organizations providing childcare within the Wreckin' Parks facilities, and the service still goes on, but it's not the City of Los Angeles, but it's Sunshine Daycare or something like this.
Now, this is the last thing that I wanted to say, I forgot, I had a senior moment, and I forgot to say it earlier. Is it, does it make any sense to ask personnel to assist us in, I mean, because we're talking about thirty employees, does it, well, it seems to me it would make some sense if we could get personnel engaged. There has to be in other departments, like, salaried positions, where as they open up, we can look to move those individuals in those areas as well. I mean, I know we've got restrictions where it relates to hiring, but there's always creative ways to do that, and, I mean, and if we're committed to try to ensure that these folks have jobs, and then possibly even find them jobs paying at the current level, I think we need to create a team to do that. So that's-
Do you want to add to that?
I think that's an excellent suggestion, and, again, drivers have experience, other entities are looking for drivers within the city, within the ancillary uses of our city functions, so-
We can work with the other departments and the Personnel Department on that. For example, I know that for delivery drivers, General Services uses delivery drivers for the mail services program.
There you go.
I don't know what their budget looks like at this time, but we can definitely check into that.
Do you think you sit on Personnel Committee?
No.
Because Mr. Zion-
No, it's now, Mr. Corrector.
Yeah, yeah, so, maybe that's a discussion to have with them, I think it's more formal. I want to hear from Recreation of Parks, this committee, on your numbers ramp up and ramp down. I think this is a little bit outside our peer view, in the bigger picture, it used to be many people who were displaced, had opportunities, whether it's the airports, the harbors, or DWP. They have tightened that up now, so to fully understand the process, but the key here is, right now, services for seniors are going to be continued with this partnership, which we're trying to create in all areas, which is somewhat of a transformation of the city, but it's a partnership that is being created, and the Aging Department feels confident that this partnership will provide the level of service necessary for seniors.
Correct. As a matter of fact, I just wanted to state that, in our conversations with the two new providers for that area, they're not new to our network, Jewish Family Services, Sanford and Northern Valley Interfaith Council, both veteran, very great agencies, they have expressed they will definitely comply with the service worker- They have expressed they will definitely comply with the service worker retention ordinance, and they value the experience of the Wreck and Park employees, and if they want to apply for any of the other jobs, they're, they're more than welcome to. They just need this, uh, council to approve this, so they can actually start with the negotiations.
Mr. Chair, question to the city attorney, our city attorney. Since the chair mentioned that we might be going a little bit out of our jurisdiction, and that, so I guess my question is, how can this committee make a request to the Personnel Committee to look into this or to help me here?
Well, I can help you.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair...
Draft a motion, draft a motion and displace workers of various city departments due to the constant revolving budget. What actually happens? What opportunity exists? Is there a pool that they go in? If they're displaced, and then another opportunity opens up within thirty, sixty, ninety days, are they the first called back when something takes place there?
I, I, I think that, I think that makes sense, but this needs to be a more narrow, focused request, because this is an immediate, so we, if that's, if that's what we have to do...
You can make a motion and request the Personnel Department to report back, respond back to the motion.
So, I just made the motion, and Mr. Reyes seconded it. Does it work like that?
Well, I think let's, let's draft it up, put it in council. I mean, as far as, I could have it back in here, uh, real easy, but...
However, whatever you want to do.
I think it would be better to do it, uh, a, a motion that really details what you need on this issue, and, and how it relates to personnel, because there's some rules that are beyond our control.
So, we'll work on that.
Okay. All right, those who are, thank you, staff, if you just, a public comment, uh, and if you need more than a minute, take it, but if you don't, please use a minute. Against the proposal, Alice Goff, Cheryl Freezy, Ed O'Brien, and Steve Voss, if you want to sit in the chairs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I want to thank the committee members for the concern they've expressed about these workers. As you're aware, the Coalition of City Unions came to the table early to be able to craft a set of concessions so that we would have a no furlough and no layoff budget. The budget was adopted with representations to council that this would be a no layoff budget. During the course of committee hearings, we also expressed concerns about the privatization of this work, because, again, the very issue of the relationships that seniors have with their care providers, whether that be those who deliver meals on a daily basis and look in on the welfare of the homebound seniors, or, um, the, the daily, uh, programs at the, at the parks, at the centers. All of that is going to be disrupted, and when, now we know that seventy employees are going to be disrupted in their employment. Representations were made that there would be provisions that workers would be retained in the Department of Recreation and Parks. When we sat down with the department, we learned that the representations only went to the offer of summer employment. These workers have been employed because senior work is year-round, it's not seasonal. These are longtime half-time employees who work regularly for years and years, and now they are in effect being laid off. And so, we, we welcome the concern that you've expressed and act, ask that this be monitored. There should be no impact on the department. Again, the concessions were made to backfill the furlough numbers. I'm not quite sure what's being referenced by the department, but we ask that this condition, this situation be carefully monitored. We thank you for your motion and, and your concern about these workers.
Thank you very much, Alice.
Alice Goff, I'm just following up on what Cheryl said, not only on the relationships, but the, the work, as you pointed out, Councilmember Wesson. You know, I guess there was a representative from the prospective, um, provider who came to the worksite, offering folks their own jobs at half of the salary that they're currently making, and no benefits. I, I don't think anybody mentioned that. Because these are long-term half-time employees, they do get prorated half-time benefits, and so it's not just a salary loss, but the loss of healthcare that, that we're also talking about in, in this case. And so, it, the, the impact is great. I also personally see it as a way around the contracting out provisions in, in our, on our contract language. It speaks to, you, you know, not contracting out the work and, and then laying off employees. Well, somehow or another, because the department is no longer, excuse me, applying for the grant, you know, it's termed or phrased as, well, this work is not being contracted out, but in, in essence it is, and, and that's the objection that we have with it.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes, good morning. My name is Steve Voss. I'm president of International Institute. We're one of the nonprofit agencies that operates the kind of programs that are in question today. Actually, I am here to support the Department of Aging's proposal that, that the contracts go forward, just so that we're clear on, on what my position is. And, and the underlying issue is that all across the city, these services are vitally important to the seniors who rely on them, and a delay in executing them can create, create some more anxiety, some more uncertainty, some more problems for those of us who, like in my case, have been serving these exact services for over thirty-five years. So, the city entered into an open and fair and very legitimate request for proposal process, and I'm sure I speak for most of the agencies who would urge the council and this committee to move forward right away with the passage of those budgets, so we can get our services underway on July one.
Thank you. You weren't marked on that. Next person, thank you for your comments, Steve. Ed O'Brien?
Uh, hello, I'm Ed O'Brien, and I'm one of those seventy-two people that's going to lose his job as of July first, but I'm being offered fifty-five or sixty percent of that pay. I just want to say, for over twenty-five years, we at Felicia Mayhood Transportation have been scheduling, transporting frail seniors that require door-to-door transportation because they can't walk or blind, suffer from cancer, Alzheimer's, et cetera, or use wheelchairs, and they can't wait to occur because it could harm themselves. We have been told recently this grant is being given to a nonprofit, and that all will be the same for our clients, yet we have been also told recently by somebody from the Department of Aging to make a list of the neediest. How can you decide between the blind, the wheelchair-bound, the dialysis, the Alzheimer dementia people? What does that mean? We, we have to make a, a list of the neediest. Obviously, to me, this implies a loss to the fraillest of the frail, of the seniors, and of course, the loss of work of people that have been doing this job for Marcy Sykes, Carol Katz, for up to twenty-five years, and have run an amazing organization with half-time employees.
Thank you for your comments. Deborah Cherry, Al Chin, Nancy Volpert, and Sandy Bishop, complete the cards, if you want to just... Go ahead, please.
I'm Debra Cherry from the Alzheimer's Association. We, um, serve many frail older adults in the city of Los Angeles, and I'm encouraging the city to go forth with the, the putting in place of these contracts. I think that, um, if you look at what's happening in our state, Adult Day healthcare programs are gonna close, lots of other programs are gonna close. Frail, older people feel more vulnerable than ever, and, um, we hope that you can do something good for these drivers. That would be really wonderful. But we also want the frail elderly to have continuity of service, so we encourage you to put the contracts through.
Thank you very much. Al?
Uh, good morning, councilmembers. I, I, my name is Al Chin, and I'm, I'm here today on behalf of the Los Angeles Aging Advocacy Coalition. We represent about one million seniors and caregivers in the greater Los Angeles area, and basically, we urge the committee to forward the contracts onto City Council as well. We appreciate what Councilmember Wesson is concerned about in terms of the employees, and we support that, and we support the recommendations, but we also want you to know that the seniors and the contracts need to be going forward, and we don't want it to be part of the ongoing jeopardy that's affecting a lot of the seniors today. So, again, we urge you to forward the recommendations onto the council.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Nancy Volpert. I'm the Director of Public Policy at Jewish Family Service. Thank you for having us. As you may know, JFS is the oldest nonprofit in Los Angeles. We've been providing a broad array of services to seniors for nearly a hundred and fifty years, and we've been working in close partnership with the Department of Aging to provide comprehensive services, cost-effective, high-quality services to older adults in the city of Los Angeles for nearly forty years. And we want to continue to provide services to the most vulnerable in our community, and we appreciate the committee's oversight and the concerns that have been raised, and we are, as the department has mentioned, in conversations with them to do what we can from our side, but we want to make sure that the seniors and questions do continue to receive the services they need in a timely manner, and urge you to go forward with the contracting process with this and all of the...
Thank you very much. Sandy Bishop?
Good morning. I'm Sandy Bishop. I'm the president and CEO of Valley Interfaith Council. I just wanted to let you know where our centers are, and we have been serving seniors in these multifurcal senior centers since the nineteen eighties. We operate the Alicia Baratas Duncan Center in Pacoima, the Bernardi Center in Van Nuys, the East Valley Center in North Hollywood, soon to move into the brand-new facility in Sherman Oaks, and we look forward to joining the Robert M. Wilkinson Center in Northridge. We also provide all the array of services. We hope and will and are determined to keep these services uninterrupted, and we also want to make those continuing, continuing relationships as we have with all the seniors since the eighties. Thank you. Please, we support those...
Thank you very much. And, uh, okay, and also a late card here for Donna Vinton, is that correct?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. I'm with Partners in Care Foundation and the Los Angeles Caregiver Resource Center, and we just wanted to support being able to continue these services and not have an interruption in contracts. You've already heard that this really could hurt the seniors, and we see that any delay not only leads to decline for the seniors that we serve, but also can lead to death. So, that's...
Thank you very much. We have no other cards on this issue. Mr. Wesson, Mr. Reyes, this issue is now before us, taking the recommendation of Aging Department to move forward. We're gonna ask that the CLA draft a motion that's satisfactory to Mr. Wesson, Mr. Reyes, and myself, calling on the personnel issues related to displacement, continuation of services under matters such as this, to report in the Personnel Committee where you could advocate in there.
And we're gonna have a report back from the department.
Right.
Where it relates to...
The startup and then the end. In two weeks, we're gonna have a report, and then in the, in the fall. That being said, I have a motion to approve this item.
Move.
Move, seconded by Mr. Reyes. So ordered. Thank you very much. Thank the Department of Aging. And remind everybody, the first meeting I had in this building under Mayor Bradley's Youth Council was someone from the Committee on Aging, and said, make sure you always think of the Aging Department, because one day you'll get there, and we're catching up.
If you're lucky, you get there.
You're lucky, if you're lucky. All right, thank you so much, and thank the providers and all those who work. Now, as the room, item one exits there, could I ask the city attorneys, representatives who came over, give us the structure? It's gonna be like a ten-minute... Mr. City Attorney.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Tim McWilliams, Deputy City Attorney. The question pertains to the structure of...
Item number three, we're taking up. And if you look at item number three, it's an appeal.
Okay. Well, my recommendation would be to allow the appellant to present their, their appeal first, and then allow...
Excuse me, there's people moving, and, uh, Sergeant, could you check the mics to make sure everybody could hear in the back?
My suggestion would be to allow the appellant to, uh, present their case first, and then allow staff to, to respond to that.
Okay. I'm gonna have the appellant, uh, then, would be Mr. Wright. Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mr. Wright, if you want to make the, uh, presentation, and his department staff here. His department staff here to make a rebuttal, so you could listen to this. Before you speak, hold on a second here. Mr. Michael Scholl?
Can we have just one minute?
Right, yeah, one minute, we're gonna get...
We have staff in place, and we also have the applicant here from the Autry Natural Center here.
Got it. But this is a city matter. I'm just, who is, is before we get started, this is those who filed an appeal.
Appellants.
The appellants, and those to rebut the appellant. Who will represent the city? Recreation and Parks? Correct.
In addition to the city rebutting the appellants, we also have the, the Autry, which are the applicants of the project.
Oh, good, join with Recreation and Parks?
Yes.
Okay. Under City Attorney's advice. Uh, we're gonna go twelve minutes. If you need more, take it, but we're gonna try to get this done in twelve minutes. In twelve minutes to state your case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will endeavor to stay within that time if we can. I'm Daniel Wright, on behalf of the SEQA appellants, which are the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance and Charles Fisher. I'd like to reserve one and a half minutes of our time for rebuttal, since as the appellant, we have the burden of proof. We'd like to enter an objection as to the June fifteenth letter of Autry submitted to the city but not placed into the City Council file. We've been unable to see that letter or prepare evidence to controvert it, if any. I'm, uh, we're gonna begin with a representative of the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Wesson. My name is Mark Kenyon. I'm here on behalf of the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance. I sit on their land use committee and have been following the Autry and Southwest merger from the very beginning. First, I wanted to just state shortly that it is our hope, the organization, we represent, I represent, by the way, approximately somewhere between six hundred and seven hundred members in Mount Washington area. It's our hope that the six point six million dollars from the state can be saved, that together with the help of the Autry and the city, that we can somehow find a way through this. However, we do not think that the Autry should be allowed to break the law. We think that the negative impacts posed by their project need to be disclosed and mitigated. We think it's entirely the responsibility of the Autry that they're in this position. We think the record clearly shows that they have consciously tried to evade the SEQA process. In addition to the letter that we're gonna hand you this morning and our previous appeal letter, I just wanted to say a couple comments on the entitlements, and that the reason for the Autry trying to evade SEQA appears to be that they're piecemealing this project. So, in addition to the consent, uh, to reasonably or not unreasonably withhold the consent to the, to the project issue that is, that was before you with the section two forty-five, the Autry also has, in order to get this grant, they have to have their lease amended so that they have a minimum of thirty years. And I would direct your attention to exhibit one in the letter that we're handing you this morning, and, and exhibit two in the appeal letter that we filed, wherein you will find that there's, I call it a smoking gun. It's a letter, an email from John Gray on May the thirteenth, two thousand and ten, and it's very clear in that letter that, uh, that, that the Autry knows that they have to have a lease amendment, but that they'll take it up at some other time. I beg to differ. SEQA requires them to take it up at this time. Then, one, one other lease or entitlement issue that, in addition to the lease and to the consent, is that the, we learned in two thousand nine, during the last time the Autry asked for expansion, expansion in Griffith Park, that they have no conditional use permit, that they're currently a non-conforming conditional use under, under the existing open space zone and height ordinances. We know this because, well, the Autry recognized this in their own EIR, and, uh, so therefore, the way, the, the current building is not, uh, does not have legal status and violates the general plan of the city of Los Angeles. Finally, there's one other issue that we noted. On the same date, May the thirteenth, John Gray and his team from the Autry put into the record with Wreck and Parks the map of their existing building and their final, uh, project as they saw it. That final project is not the one that they tried to sneak through with respect to the, um, to the notice of exemption, uh, and in particular, I just wanted to point out that they talk in there about some new special event space. We think there's an additional entitlement process related to the, the potential expansion of alcohol use that they would need to go through a CUP process as well. Thank you, and I'll give it back to Dan.
Hey, my name's Charlie Fisher, one forty South...
Hey, my name is Charlie Fisher, 140 South Avenue 57 in Highland Park. I am a professional historian. I've been dealing with issues in the city of Los Angeles for many years, and I'm going to kind of go over some of the fairly recent history on this, as well as some earlier history. The problem we have with this is the Autry had made a number of promises back in 2003 at the time of the merger. The Autry reiterated these promises in their vision statement to Councilmember Weesar in 2007, and yet now the Autry has backpedaled from these particular items, and we are concerned about that. Also, in part of this, the SEQA issues do come into play. There's the comment that this was a ministerial act to approve this particular project. It really wasn't, because the city of Los Angeles, being the landowner here, there is the issue of discretion here. The city has discretion whether or not to grant this particular permit. So, it becomes a discretionary act, and therefore, SEQA does come in based on that. I'm entering into the record a number of documents, including three that were put into the 245 hearing last week, as well as some additional documents, including the EIR, not the EIR, but the National Register nominations for the Autry, which states the fact that the collection is a major part of this particular declaration. And to remove the collection from the Southwest Museum is problematic. We don't have a problem with the Autry sharing the collection at both sites. What we want to see is that a good chunk of this collection, and by the way, this is a huge collection, there's plenty to go around. The Autry's comments at the council hearing, I believe, was that they would only be displaying about 1% of the collection at the Autry, which, you know, we have 99% of the collection is not being displayed then. A larger percentage of it was displayed at the Southwest Museum when it was being operated. There's plenty to go around. We are asking that the city go back to Councilmember Weesar's request in 2009, that the Autry be asked to follow through on their promises that they made over several years, and be held to work with the Southwest Museum property to bring it back as a viable museum in the city of Los Angeles. That's all we're asking here.
All right. And I will complete our initial presentation to focus on some technical SEQA issues. Number one, Mr. Fisher has putting into the record today evidence of an indirect impact of this project on the Southwest Museum because of the replication of the Southwest's signature exhibits that once existed on Mount Washington in Griffith Park. And the reason that that's an impact is that it was, as he's indicated, a key aspect of its historic nomination for National Register status. That's one issue that was known to Reckon Park staff, because this issue was raised during the EIR process during the 2007-2009 expansion project. In addition, there is a negative land use impact. We've been talking about this in public comment at council this week, which is, the Northeast Community Plan has a specific provision that says that the Southwest Museum, that the city will only pursue properties to support the Southwest Museum and preserve its present location on Mount Washington. And that policy is a city policy and the law, and that is why the tags that they talk about obeying the law, because the Autry's proposal, as it was in the expansion, and now again with this reconfiguration project, is to replicate premier Southwest Museum exhibits in Griffith Park, thereby violating the city's organic law. That's a problem. It was known to Reckon Park staff, some of them sat through the hearing in 2009 when we went through and reviewed a 20-page letter of Northeast Plan experts who opined that the replication of Southwest Museum exhibits in Griffith Park would be a negative land use impact on the general plan. I wanted to point out to you in the exhibits, these two drawings. These two drawings were turned in on May 13 by John Gray, and they show substantial non-public areas of collections, and over here in the corner, collections, storage. And then, this was called the final reconfiguration, and this shows substantial new public areas going where the former collection was to be stored.
What location is that for the record?
Pardon?
What location are you referring to?
This is, these are both on the first floor. This is the same floor plan, this is existing. This is called final...
Of which location?
Of the Autry, Autry, right. And so, essentially, they're talking about replacing non-public spaces with new art galleries and a public special event space and new restrooms. Those trigger new traffic impacts, new parking demand issues. None of that was studied, and this, and there is lots of credible evidence that until it became inconvenient in this proceeding, this was and is a project they're pursuing, because they purchased a building in the city of Burbank to move, and they are currently beginning their construction work, that building is surrounded by a construction fence right now, to make that happen. Very soon, this space is going to be empty, and this is the project that they're heading for. But they're claiming to you, we believe falsely, that the project is only these two galleries down here on the end. But even if it's just those two galleries, look at this map on the current status. Part of it is a 4,000-square-foot collection storage area. When you look at the plan that was put before the Reckon Parks Commission, you will see that that were, that that same gallery is now shown as, I'm sorry, that same space is now shown as a gallery. It is not a gallery, and SEQA requires you to analyze the current status on the ground, not what they intended it to be, but what is it? It's collection storage now, it's expanding 4,000 square feet into new gallery space, creating new visitor demand, new parking, new traffic demand. That was, should have been obvious to the Reckon Park staff, and yet they didn't follow up on it. There's also this claim that the consent is not discretionary. Ironically, in the EIR in 2009, the Autry and the city said that the consent, the same provision, was a discretionary decision under the city. So it's preposterous that they're claiming now that it is not. And it is discretionary, because it says that consent shall not be unreasonably withheld, but even the case law they cite says that you can withhold if the purpose of the use is unlawful. Well, it's unlawful. You have a, the city has a basis to say that they cannot grant consent, because the proposed project for this particular use is unique and therefore violates the law. I'm going to stop now, because I wanted to reserve a little bit of time for rebuttal after the presentation.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have to, I don't know if I have to have a rebuttal. I need to either side, so I thank you. If you want to take another 39 seconds, please do.
You don't have to allow rebuttal.
Right, I got that.
But you should allow equal time.
Equal time, so you have another 39 seconds if you want.
I'll object to not having rebuttal, because I'm the appellant, so you're putting me first, and then I can't respond to anything that comes out in the hearing, and that is an unfair hearing. So the city attorney should be dealing with that issue.
The city attorney be advised that he thinks it's unfair?
It is, and...
Well, wait, wait, just state your point, sir.
It is.
Okay? No, no, now you're stating...
The case of Clark versus City of Hermosa Beach, it would be unfair. But now we've run the clock down. The only other point I was going to make has to do with the fact that the letter of the Autry's attorney does not even deal with the exceptions to a categorical exemption. And the exceptions that apply here are that there are unusual circumstances. We agree, normally, a reconfiguration of space inside of a building probably wouldn't trigger environmental review. But this one, which results in the replication of the Southwest Museum exhibits, triggers an unusual circumstance for a land use impact, and, under F of the exceptions, a potential negative impact on a historic resource. That should have triggered environmental review. It didn't, and the document, the notice of exemption picked up again at Reckon Parks for this approval on May 20 was invalid, therefore, the project should be overturned. Thank you.
Thank each and every one of you. Appreciate it. Next, I'd like to call Recreation and Parks, and also the applicant, whoever the Recreation and Parks want to calls up from the Autry, if at all. You have 12 minutes to...
Good morning. Mike Scholl with Recreation and Parks. I'm joined by Paul Davis on my right, and I'm going to, Paul is with our environmental group, so if it's okay, I'd like to turn the initial discussion over to Paul.
Paul Davis, Reckon Parks. So, the, our response to the appeal deals with three items. First, dealing with whether or not the project was categorically exempt. The department determined, and staff determined, that it did qualify as a Class 1 categorical exclusion, which deals with interior-exterior alterations to an already-existing facility with such things as interior partitions, plumbing, electrical conveyances, and other kinds of modifications which essentially result in a rearrangement of the interior of the building. The staff found that there were no exceptions to the exemption, that the project that was presented by the proponent only included those modifications, and that there were no other exceptions to that. The exemption did include a review of the whole of the project. The Autry may have a vision for the museum, but the modifications that were presented to us only included the two galleries that were part of the original application for the grant. The justification for, as I've already mentioned, included just the modifications to those two galleries, and did not constitute an expansion of use. There were no, there were no planned expansion of the exterior walls to create additional square footage to the building, but merely just modifications to the interior structure of the building. And that was pretty much our determination for the exemption.
Mr. Scholl?
No, I mean, those are just, that was essentially what we used in our, the actions that were taken before our Board of Commissioners.
Right.
So, we stand behind those decisions.
Hello. Councilman Ed KC, Legal Counsel for the Autry. Real quickly, I just wanted to address the piecemealing allegations. There seems to be two of them. One is based upon some prior, emphasizing that word, plans, by the Autry. Let me say emphatically, those plans are off the table. As Park and Rex have now said, there are no planned expansions of the building at Griffith Park. Number two, in terms of the, number two, in terms of the issue about the need to get an extended lease, that is not being required by the State Parks folks. One of the reasons lies in the ground lease itself. Article 21m says that the city shall, two years prior to the expiration lease, consider releasing the facility. Since the city has, like any person to a contract, a good-faith obligation to enter into those negotiations, that is sufficient for the State Parks on that issue. So we do not need an extension to the term of the ground lease at this time. Lastly, on the issue of the exceptions to the exemptions, let me also say emphatically that carrying out this interior improvement work at the Griffith Park facility will not cause any physical changes to the Southwest facilities. SEQA is about physical changes. There will be none to the Southwest by virtue of carrying out the interior improvement work at the Griffith Park facility.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any questions? Yep.
When we look at what is being planned for the exhibit itself, does the fact that the exhibit is no longer in Southwest Museum, but now in this facility, does that have an impact on the Gin Autry and/or the Southwest Museum?
It does not have an impact as that term is defined under SEQA. No.
So you're talking about the physical? There's no physical impact either in Southwest Museum or, obviously, there is in the Gin Autry, because it's an improvement.
Yes. The physical change at the Autry in Griffith Park is interior, and in terms of what that interior work will do to the Southwest facility, there is no physical changes.
Mr. Chair, I know it's not necessary to have a rebuttal, but could I offer three minutes of my time to a rebuttal?
I won't take your time, I'll take the, this time here, because they're about done. They're 7:47.
Okay.
Right now. So we'll hold this time here, and if we want to run the clock, let the record show that you completed your statement. And if the applicant wants to rebut, I'll take Mr. Reyes's...
Appreciate that.
...recommendation. Thank you all. Mr. Wright? For the record, we're going to run the rest of the clock, so it'll be half the time plus a little more.
Okay. So, again, Daniel Wright, on behalf of the appellants. There is an exception here that does, two exceptions that apply, and the standard is very low, because the SEQA law favors the preparation of environmental review as opposed to an exemption. So you have to fit the exemption very precisely. Here, even the wording of the SEQA Class 13 exception that the city's claiming says that there are no additive features. But here, first of all, this plan alone is a huge, thousands, tens of thousands of square feet of addition to the building. And despite these claims today, that they have no further project anticipated, this was submitted to Reckon Parks on May 13, when that was not apparently a significant issue to them. But this was noticed to the city, that they did have plans for all of the space that's about to become empty, and it's...
Do you question, that document that you had in your hand was submitted to Reckon Parks, May 13, 2011?
Correct. No, no, 10, 2010, before they got the NOE. They walked in and had their first meeting.
I just wanted to get it right on the dates. Thank you.
Yeah. So there's, you know, there's before, and here's after. It's significant. But on the exception issue, there's tremendous amount of evidence that we've put into this record, but is also in the record of the previous EIR. And if there is litigation, the administrative record will include the previous project. There is case law that says that. But we've pointed to it, or tried to point this to the city, that, you know, there's this letter, 20 pages and a lot of exhibits, showing that there's this impact on the general plan if you move the Southwest Museum over there. And that was, they've announced this in press releases, all of this is in the record in terms of their intent. And that has a negative impact, because it undermines the city's policy to, quote, "preserve the present location of the Southwest Museum on Mount Washington." That's the land use impact. Mr. Fisher has put in evidence that there is, and, you know, when we talk about physical impact for a historical resource, sometimes it's not a physical impact, like demolition is obvious for historic impact. But here, because the Autry itself put in a nomination to...
Your suggestion, just to be clear, is that in the, within SEQA law, under that element of historic impact, the movement of the exhibit itself to the Autry, where there is no longer an exhibition or exhibits in the Southwest of itself, is a significant impact, contrary to what was stated a few minutes ago?
Correct. Our point is that there's not, they know that there's a significant, potential significant impact, and that falls within the exception for significant impacts for a categorical exemption.
But to be very clear, you're distinguishing the notion of a physical change versus a historic impact that in of itself does not have to mean a physical change in the building itself.
Correct.
And you're asserting that the Recreation and Parks Department did not see it that way?
Yeah. There is a physical change in that the former premier exhibits of the Southwest Museum, the First Californians exhibit, and the Ethnobotanical Garden, which exists right now out there in front of the Southwest Museum, those are being essentially removed to the Autry and made redundant over there, so that the Southwest Museum becomes disposable.
Was there any type of commitments, verbal or otherwise, that indicated that there could be a possibility of an exhibit in Southwest Museum in the future, under the management and/or control of the Gin Autry Museum?
Well, there's been a cornucopia that I think you'll probably hear during public comment about certain projects that supposedly were happening, but even when we talked to people in Autry itself, and Councilmember Weesar today says, "The Autry does not have a plan," other than just saying, "Generally, we're looking for partners to operate the Southwest Museum as something other than a museum." But operating it as something other than a museum violates this city's general plan, because the Southwest Museum tried to move from Mount Washington twice in 1980, once in '89 and early '90s. In response, the City Council enacted into the general plan a protective provision that's there to protect the Southwest Museum and its place in the city. And that is a negative historic impact and a land use impact.
Good morning. Mark Kenyon again, the appellant. I just wanted to address the issue of the need or no need for this 30-year extension, and... I just wanted to address the issue of the need or no need for this 30-year extension. And last week, late last week, I contacted Senator De Leon's office and asked him if they could contact State Parks to help resolve this. My understanding from one of his staff members is that they plan to put, that they talked to them that, yes, in fact, the state is going to reply, is going to require the 30-year lease, and that.
Send it back.
And that, it's my expectation that they'll put a letter into the record tomorrow, if the record's still open, I suppose, stating that fact. The second one, I guess I would draw your attention to a letter that the Autry has put into the record that talks to when things are due. And in part, in that letter, they talk about the SEQA, the state is requiring the SEQA process to be finished by April the 12th, 2012. And then the next paragraph, they talk about that they want all the tenant, land tenure issues resolved by July the 12th, which I think is something that we've also heard from the Autry. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the hearing. The LA City Attorney say that we concluded the hearing. Both sides got to speak. Thanks to Mr. Reyes, we had additional from the appellant. So everybody got it out. Now we're going to have a public comment on this issue here. It's one minute. We've got a lot of cards. If you need a little extra, you can, or if you need a little less, you can. Sergeant, if you could straighten the chairs so people could feel comfortable coming up here. This is for, the proposal is what was just stated by the appellant. Noel Duran, Norma De La Peña, forgive me?
Hello.
Yeah, Tina Miller, Dr. Williams, please, come on up. Come on, Dr. Williams, don't be shy. And Sergeant, we can put another chair up there. We could help everybody.
Hi.
All right. Hi, my name is Tina Miller, 6433 Crescent Street, Los Angeles. I am co-chair of the Gervanza Improvement Association. I'm here in support of the appeal filed by Daniel Wright regarding 4,700 Western Heritage Way. I ask the committee to not exempt Autry National Center from SEQA environmental review. This is imperative to the impact of the Southwest Museum, and it includes the desertion of this first museum of Los Angeles. This is also going to impact the communities of Griffith Park. And Griffith Park is a public park that represents the spirit and generosity of the Griffith family for open space for the people of Los Angeles. As a resident of Los Angeles, I have always had concerns of commercial development in our public parks. That includes the Autry National Center and their presence inside the park. Fulfilling the SEQA requirements regarding the various improvements to the Autry Museum is the right thing to do. The community impact would be significant to the original Southwest Museum and the entire property, including the Casa de Adobe. The SEQA requirements are very important as they allow a proper assessment of this matter.
Thank you very much. Dr. Williams.
Please, sir. Okay. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Surino. Part of my experience is, over 15 years in working with museums, in museums, in the collections, and a museum is not a building. A museum is the collection, the researchers, the exhibitors, all of the people who make it live. Southwest Museum is dead right now. The Griffith Park campus is alive because they have people in it, and people make a museum. So regarding this particular item, item three, I've done over 300 environmental impact reports, statements, assessments for international and national and private organizations. This is subject to piecemealing, public controversy, and inadequate project description.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
I'm Norma De La Peña, and I'm a resident of LA County and a retired teacher in Los Angeles and current part-time instructor at a community college, Los Angeles Trade Tech. As, I'll leave the legal aspects to the lawyers who spoke so well earlier. I would just like to have, express my viewpoint as a teacher who has often given lessons in reading and writing to the community, and it's so important to give the students a feeling of self-pride. This is mostly, the Highland Park area is an area of poor communities that need to keep hope alive, as our current president's campaign mentioned a while back, a couple of years ago. We need to have the students feel that they have self-pride in their neighborhoods, writing and reading about local communities, visiting the artifacts there in their own community of Highland Park in the Mount Washington area with the support of the neighbors in Mount Washington. It's important that the students keep a feeling that they belong to the community and that the community has something to offer them. And I just urge you to be, to keep, be in favor of the proposal and keep hope alive in our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being a teacher. Is it Ms. Duran? Is there a Duran here? Okay, Dr. Moore, Mark Kenyon, Charles Fisher. There's four seats here if everybody wants to come up. Hi.
Hi, my name is Noah Duran. I'm a Mount Washington resident, and I just want to say that it's really, really sad that the museum is now closed because a lot of the artifacts that are in the Southwest Museum were, were found in Mount Washington, and some of them were found in my house. And for, and there's a quarter of a million artifacts in the museum, and for the Autry to come and take that away from us, it's something that really affects us. Because as a student, I used to go there as a child. I used to love going there, and now it's closed, it's dead. And it has a really impact in myself and my community because it's ripping something away from us that really, really meant a lot to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The city's general plan is being violated. The policy in the plan is to protect our historic Southwest Museum. You know this, we know this, and the Autry knows this. Purpose of this project is to relocate the Southwest Museum to Griffith Park in direct disregard of this plan and direct disregard of a vote of the Board of Refused Powers on June 30th, 2009, in a five-to-zero vote. They said, following a court decision that said that the commission of the Parks could not make this decision because it had been contaminated by a major player retired from Latham and Watkins. And so it just so happens that this time, Latham and Watkins gave up for a year their contract with the Autry. Surprised, we were surprised. And that meant that they could then have the commission make this decision and get around the Board of Refused Powers vote, which was five-to-zero. And three members of the city council, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, and Bill Rosendahl, said to the lawyer of Latham and Watkins, "You must put in writing that you're going to do what you said you would do in 2003 and restore the Southwest Museum as a fully functioning museum." And the lawyer lost it, started shouting, and then they marched out. And this was nine minutes before six o'clock when there's going to be a new city attorney. They had it wired by the previous city attorney, who would sign the agreement if it went the other way, but it didn't. They lost five-to-zero, and now they're asking a way to get around the.
Thank you very much.
Barring of the commission making the decision because of its pollution by a member of the Latham and Watkins, former.
Charles Fisher, Mark Kenyon.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke already. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm, Mr. Chairman, I also spoke already.
Okay, thank you very much. Nicole Possett, Martha Benedict, Ann Wallman, and Janet Dodson, please.
Good morning, Chairman, Councilman Reyes, and Councilman Wesson. Thank you for taking the time today to hear our testimony. I am in support of the appeal by the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance and Charles Fisher. And as someone who has expertise in historic and cultural resources, I would like to read Section 1506, 4.5 of the SEQA guidelines that provide that a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historic resource means physical demolition, destruction, relocation, or alteration of the resource or its immediate surroundings such that significance of a historic resource would be material impaired, materially impaired. We are talking about the relocation of the Southwest Museum's primary function and uses, which are considered part of the significance of the Southwest Museum in the '92 and 2007 National Register nomination for both, for the Southwest Museum. Additionally, the Casa de Adobe is a local historic cultural monument, and there would be indirect impacts on both resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Martha Benedict. I'm the president of the Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council, and we're one of the founding groups of the Friends of Southwest Museum Coalition. We've consistently supported the reopening of the Southwest Museum in Mount Washington, and we urge you to support this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ann.
Okay. I'm Ann Wallman. I've been a member of Southwest Museum, now a member of Autry, for a long time. There's a tremendous irony in what we are talking about today. Autry wants to change a part of their structure, which is a warehouse, into a gallery. But since 2006, Autry has changed Southwest Museum galleries into a warehouse. This has resulted in substantial structural changes in terms of the display cases, the tables that hold artifacts. As a matter of fact, the historic shelves in the Caracol Tower, which were done under Loomis's planning, have been taken out. So the fact is, Autry has exacted not only a toll on the collection, but a toll on the building. We would like to see Southwest Museum reopened. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet. Janet Dodson.
How can city land on which the Autry sits, how can city land on which the Autry sits not require SEQA? I understand the impulse to have a, have the Autry be the kind of state of the world-class museum by having the only display of the valuable Southwest Museum collection. But this is in violation of the written agreement that would take the collection away from its home. When the city and the state establishes laws and rules, and our own city does not follow those rules, where do we turn? I was appalled to hear an Autry employee claim that the original agreement, written by people no longer with the Autry and is therefore no longer valid. Yes, it is. Live up to your commitments, honor your own written words, and abide by the laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmela Gomez, is that correct? And then Isaac K. That's the last cards I have, those who are for the proposal. Please. I'm calling you right now.
Okay. Isaac K. Maxon.
Sergeant, could you assist? Go ahead.
Yesterday, I was driving to the Heritage Square, and as I was being welcomed by a sign, the historic Arroyo Seco Parkway, there's another sign that says Southwest Museum. Now, I know, as a resident of Los Angeles and being part of the Coalition, that they, that it is just a dead space and just the tower is visible. But the international traveler, looking in guidebooks, this is an iconic structure, especially for those studying American Indian artifacts, and it is dead. No, this SEQA must take place, and I fully support, and I'm totally opposed that this has been dragging on for eight years like this.
Thank you very much.
Carmela Gomez, President of Highland Park Heritage Trust. I'm here today in support of the SEQA appeal. I firmly believe that there is a solution without violating the city's general plan. We, the city of Los Angeles, cannot approve a project that violates our own written laws and policies. Instead, we must work together to find a solution that upholds the city of, laws of our city, and honors the original merger agreement to provide a vibrant museum system that includes the Southwest Museum and the Casa de Adobe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes those who are for the proposal. Now, those who are against, Leon Level, Pamela Hannah, Robert Straff, Joan Cumming. Why don't you go first?
Okay. My name is Joan Cumming. I work for the Autry National Center, and my message for you today is that the Autry has considered seriously all the uses for the Southwest Museum site and has made an informed decision for its future. We indeed hired architect Brenda Levin in 2003 to conduct a study of the Southwest Museum site, to see what it would take to be able to maintain the building as a fully functioning museum. The cost far outweighed the benefit, over $21 million in 2003, just to bring the building up to code. And in the ensuing Autry master plan published in 2006, the professional opinion was that the facility could not function in the 21st century as an accredited, fully functioning museum. The Autry Board accepted this decision. The Board decided that a mixed use of the building would be ideal. Since then, Autry representatives have met with Occidental College, with Nicole Possett of the Coalition, and Councilman Weesar, to discuss a future vision of the Southwest site as a mixed-use educational or community facility housing Native American archaeological or museum studies classes. And I would actually like to submit the Southwest Museum rehabilitation study to the committee.
Thank you very much. You can give it to the sergeant. Thank you so much. Next.
Hi, I'm Pamela Hannah, a resident of Los Angeles, employed by the Autry National Center. I joined the Southwest Museum in 1998 and managed the historic Southwest Museum campus for more than 12 years. My message for you this morning is this. The Southwest Museum building does not work in the 21st century as a fully functioning museum. The historic building is far too small and inflexible to showcase the immense and beautiful collection. Major renovations are needed, temperature and humidity control, fire life safety, HVAC systems, and structural stabilization, which are cost prohibitive and would compromise the historic integrity of the building. The Autry master plan dated May 2006 states, "Upgrading the entire Southwest Museum infrastructure to museum standards is not contemplated due to technical and financial limitations." No one knows the building better than I. No one loves and is committed to that building more than I. But I'm the first to admit that these are extreme challenges. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Take your time.
It's been racing us. I've been there a long time. In order for this world-class collection to be exhibited, as it fully deserves, it must be exhibited at Griffith Park.
Thank you.
One question, one quick question. I thank you for your hard work, because you've been there for many years. I know you've done a lot for the community. But my question to you really is, having that position which says all of the exhibit, is there consideration and/or possibility of a portion of the exhibit that fits the size, albeit as small as it is? Because this was built by Charles Loomis at the turn of the century. Understanding the great capacity of Ginatri Museum, is it possible to have a portion of exhibit to allow for the local community to have access to a wonderful collection, knowing that the Ginatri has an amazing facility, to take care of what is the whole collection? Is that possible?
It is possible. In fact, in September 2006, we, the Autry, proposed a mixed-use, future vibrant life for the Southwest Museum, and enclosed, included two galleries that would feature Southwest Museum exhibits. That's still our plan. We still are hoping to find a community partner to help us make that happen.
And that would keep the exhibit capacity of Southwest as full as it was before?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
In other words, it's Southwest Museum 15 years ago. You have all exhibits available, all exhibits open. Are you suggesting that if a partnership should arise, the same exhibit capacity would remain the same?
I think because of major renovation. I think because of major renovations we've got to make to the building, temperature, humidity control, fire life safety, there are a lot of physical challenges to the building. We don't think, in doing so, it would, it would compromise the historic integrity of the building. We don't feel a fully functioning museum is, is, is possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Straff. I've lived in 4844 Eldred Street for more than 20 years. I've been a member of the Southwest Museum since the early '90s, and was married there in 1995. I currently serve as president of the Mount Washington Association. I have come to speak on both the Autry-Griffith Park issues before you, and in deference to your time, will address both here. First, please make no further efforts to obstruct the award of $6.6 million to further the education of the children of Los Angeles, including my nine-year-old son, Mount Washington Regent Forrest Straff. Second, please consider the history of the Friends and their corrosive rhetoric and threats of lawsuits, a continuation of a pattern of some five years. First, the Friends claimed $100 million accounting scandal, a fraud on the part of Jackie Autry and the Autry National Center, an Enron-scale accounting scandal. They filed out a complaint. It went nowhere. Then, they complained the merger was illegal and null, and that the state attorney general would come to the rescue. Hasn't happened. The state attorney general is now the governor. And now, they're threatening the city council with a CEQA lawsuit, and waving their fingers in your face and admonishing you to obey the law. So I ask you, who are these Friends? Certainly not Friends of the Mount Washington community or Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Leon Level, Luke Swetland, Julia Birdsfield, David Burton, please.
Thank you, gentlemen. Leon Level will not be speaking.
Okay.
My name's Luke Swetland. I'm with the Autry, and I wanted to just say, this CEQA appeal is an attempt by a handful of individuals in one neighborhood to deprive the city of LA of $6.6 million in jobs. And this CEQA appeal is their attempt to force the Autry to reopen the Southwest site as a fully functioning museum. You've heard, we don't believe that can be done. We believe in a mixed-use future. Nicole Posert, Jose Weezer believe this. They've invited us to talk with them. And once again, here's a letter the Autry sent to Jose Weezer on May 26 of this year, 2011. I'd like it entered into the record. It shows the Autry's continuing commitment to reopen one or two exhibitions in the Southwest. Finally, we're not going to dig up the Ethno-Botanical Garden, plant by plant, and move it to Griffith Park. The exhibitions, the gardens at the Southwest, stay there. What we're putting in at Griffith Park is something different. Our curator will speak in a moment to explain what the difference is. It's two places, not one or the other. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Julia Bensfield, and I'm an Autry employee. My message today is that the Autry has and continues to have a dynamic plan for the Southwest Museum campus. We have a specific vision for the Southwest Museum site, originally presented to the public in September 2006. In fact, we've had two recent meetings with Nicole Posert and Councilman Weezer about the future use of the site, outlined in the letter we sent Mr. Weezer, which you can find in your materials. Less than a month ago, Nicole Posert of the Coalition, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and representatives from Mr. Weezer's office were given a tour of the Southwest Museum campus. We are a museum. We are not developers. We have never entertained a vision for the Southwest site that is not in keeping with its rich history and mission to serve the public. That is why we have offered to donate the building to a suitable and responsible entity organization. We plan to partner with them, in addition to maintaining at least one gallery and displaying objects elsewhere in the building where needed.
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. The letter to Jose Weezer?
Yeah.
Yeah, the letter to Jose Weezer, it's right here. Lisa, make copies all around, please. Thank you. Next.
David Burton, excuse me, David Burton with the Autry National Center. I was responsible for overseeing and writing the Nature Education Facilities Grant, which is at the center of this hearing.
We'll make up.
Shall I start over?
Yes.
My name's David Burton. I'm with the Autry. I was responsible for overseeing and writing the Nature Education Facilities Grant, which is at the center of this hearing. I want to address this issue of the 30-year lease and possible extension of the lease. I've spoken numerous times with the folks at the Office of Grants and Local Services in Sacramento. They're the administrators of this grant. And in my conversations with them prior to submitting the application, and since the award of the application, is that they're perfectly fine with the fact that our lease expires, I believe, in 2037, a couple of years before the grant term, as it were. What was acceptable to them was a signed letter from the city of Los Angeles, expressing their willingness to extend the lease at the appropriate time. The appropriate time would be a couple of years before a lease expires. The state does not expect someone to be renegotiating an extension to a lease 20, 25 years before the end of that lease. So there is a stipulation in the grant guidelines and the administrative guidelines of this grant, to allow for an applicant, for a grante, to get this award and implement a project without having exactly that 30-year lease in place. We have the proper documentation in place with the state.
Thank you. Robin Hedrick, Eric Greenberg, Lelena Luark, and Yadahira De Leong.
My name is Robin Hedrick. I'm the Director of Public Programs for the Autry National Center, and my message for you is this: Moving forward with this grant does not preclude the Autry from seeking a positive future for the Southwest Museum site. We can do both. We can continue to look for a partner to plan a vibrant future for the Mount Washington site, while at the same time, continue to fulfill our mission by preparing exhibitions for the public. Let us not forget who really loses if the Autry loses this grant. 50,000 Los Angeles-area schoolchildren won't have the opportunity to learn about American Indian cultures. The American Indian community will lose an important forum to tell their stories. The entire Los Angeles community, hundreds of thousands of visitors, won't be able to explore an important part of the American story, the American Indian story. And the community will lose $6.6 million in Los Angeles-based job opportunities. There is no reason why we can't use this grant to renovate our galleries, while also planning for our future. Let's join together and do both.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Eric Greenberg. I'm Director of Education at the Autry, and this morning, I'd like to dispel this serious misconception that somehow the Autry has abandoned or dropped programming at the Southwest Museum and at the Casa de Adobe. My department runs a highly regarded and well-received junior docent program at the Casa de Adobe, a program we run in partnership with the Arroyo Seco Middle School Magnet, a program Councilman Reyes routinely honors and applauds in his certificates of recognition to our students and to my staff at the end of every school year. On average, this program brings over 1,000 students to the Casa, and in truth, this is about the maximum number of students the Casa can handle. Its limited parking, poor plumbing, and the fragility of the courtyard Adobe bricks limits the amount of use the Casa can endure. Every December, we continue to host the Southwest Museum's longest-running program, Las Posadas, which started in the late 1940s. And it is a wonderful program that's approaching the 60th year, thanks to the help of the Autry. And I think that we should, you should know that we are proud and we remain committed to these educational programs at the Casa. We should celebrate this grant and not see it as a limitation, but as an expansion for all of us.
Thank you very much. And thank you for that hard work.
Good morning. I'm Lelena Luark with the Autry National Center. I have been involved with the care of the Southwest Museum collection since the merger in 2003. My message for you today is that although the Southwest Museum no longer features exhibits open to the public, there's still very important work going on there. Let me explain why. In 2003, we found that the Southwest Museum collection was in danger because of harmful storage conditions, pest infestations, and building leaks. Artifacts were overcrowded and inaccessible. At the same time, we needed to repair extensive structural damage due to the 1994 Northridge earthquake. This required us to move 230,000 objects out of the main tower, the Caracol Tower. The Autry considers, the Autry considered a number of alternatives, and decided to use the Southwest Museum exhibition galleries for storing thousands of artifacts during the repair project. We only took galleries offline when they were needed to store artifacts coming out of the tower. Exhibits and programs continued for as long as possible. There was never a plan to abandon the Southwest Museum, in fact, quite the opposite. The staff is busy working at the Southwest to preserve these important artifacts, so they can be exhibited, researched, accessible to tribes, and available for the education of future generations. I ask you to support the Autry's renovation project, so that all this hard work will not be in vain.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leong.
Good morning. My name is Yadahira De Leong, and I work at the Autry National Center. I'm here to explain why the Autry did not submit an NEF grant application for the Southwest Museum campus. Based on the grant requirements, we determined a Griffith Park project would be far more competitive for the following reasons. The NEF was looking for projects that would have the broadest public impact and reach the largest number of people. The Autry and Griffith Park reaches and represents a hugely diverse audience: Native American, Latino, Chinese, and European immigrant, Jewish people, African American, the LGBT community, and others. The subject matter at the Southwest Museum was limited to Native cultures. Even if reconfiguring, reconfiguration of the Southwest interiors were large enough, the historic nature of the building and the seismic and structural rehabilitation required would have well exceeded the $7 million limit of this grant. The NEF was looking for shovel-ready projects. The Southwest Museum is not shovel-ready for new galleries. This NEF grant would not have been awarded for a project at the Southwest Museum campus for all these reasons. The only chance we had of winning this grant was to apply for the project in Griffith Park.
Thank you very much. The last three speakers, Stephen Carr, Elizabeth Kennedy, and V.C. Level.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is the Autry open today?
It's Monday, and I don't believe they're open today.
Okay. I was getting ready to say, who's, who's minding the store?
All right, good. Very good there, Mr. Wesson. Okay, here we go. And the other two speakers, Elizabeth and Ben V.C. This is Stephen.
My name is Dr. Stephen Carr. I am the Director and Amundsen Curator at the Southwest Museum of the American Indian at the Autry National Center. Beyond my family, I have dedicated my life to educating the public about American Indian history, art, and culture. I'm here to set the record straight on one assertion by the Coalition, that the exhibits on California Native cultures at the Griffith Park campus are to be exactly the same as those that were once housed at Mount Washington. That is untrue. The exhibitions that I and innumerable Indian communities throughout the state of California have worked on for the past nearly seven years, again, to educate the broader public, are vastly different from those that were originally housed in Mount Washington. This is an opportunity to educate with a dedicated Indian exhibition. There is no dedicated Indian content at any museum in the county of Los Angeles, let alone the city right now. This is an opportunity to continue to educate young people, older people, and beyond, about the vibrancy and importance of American Indian cultures.
Thank you very much. Could I have staff at the Los Angeles City Attorney at the table, please? Mr. Shoal? If you want to see, feel comfortable there. Michael, Ms. Adams. Members, we've just had a spirited hour and, or somewhat hearing on this matter here. Facts were presented on both sides, there are statements of fact. Mr. Shoal, in your professional opinion, and you're a protector of parks, protector of process, from Chatsworth to Zanbido, from Boyle Heights to Venice, how do you see this matter, and what would be your recommendation to the committee?
Well, we stand behind the, as staff represented to our Board of Commissioners, the actions taken before our Board of Commissioners on this project, and feel that CEQA was handled in a lawful manner. We do have concurrence from the city attorney as well on that matter, so we stand behind the actions that our board took.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to say?
I don't really have anything to add to that, no.
Thank you very much. Members, do you have anything you want to add to it, or make a motion to accept what the Recreation and Parks has said?
Well, given the level of concern over the general plan, and its verbiage in terms of the Southwest Museum, and our own policies, our own law, if we refer that to PLUM, we could try to separate, or at least understand, those implications in terms of the city's ability to follow its own law regarding the Southwest Museum itself. I think that's an issue that will allow us to break down this notion of historic impact, given its change, and how it has essentially been, at least at this point, closed.
I would like to keep it in here. I see it as an issue that's in this committee, as opposed to that, so I wouldn't necessarily do that. There is a timeline here. I support Recreation and Parks in their effort to try to do this. Teachers who spoke on both sides, in the love of museums, the museum system, the challenges that we have, the partnerships that we need to develop in order to do what we do, is very difficult. So I feel, and I, and there's much more work to do, I'm anxious to take my jacket off and help in all sides to do what is hopefully the right thing, but I want to ask for a motion to accept the Recreation and Parks proposal, if that would be one, and then we could go for it.
You make the motion, Mr. Chair.
We move that the hearing has been held, and that we, give us the verbiage, Mr. City Attorney.
Well, you would be determining that, based on what's been presented to you, that there is substantial evidence to support the determination that the proposed project is exempt from CEQA.
Due to the information that has been presented today in the hearing that we had, I do not believe that CEQA is in violation here, that we support the actions of the Recreation and Parks Commission. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? And if we need it in writing, we'll do it in writing?
Can I pose a question?
You can.
Okay. City Attorney, in light of the historic element within CEQA, and given the changes in what has been identified in this hearing, is there any merit from your opinion as to the significance of the historic impact, given what CEQA calls out in relation to the suggested changes?
Well, Councilman, I can't give you my legal opinion here on the record. Quite frankly, I'm not as well-versed in a lot of these underlying facts as the folks who spoke before you, so I think your role is determined, to determine, based on the evidence that has been presented, whether or not the exemption applies. And in that consideration, of course, you are looking at whether there's an exception to an exemption, and that would be whether there is a significant impact to a protected historical resource. So that would be your decision to make, based on the evidence that's presented before you.
Right. So we're making the decision as policymakers at this moment, but it would be, and I just want to state this for the record, suffice to say that, given the level of information provided by today's hearing, we do not have enough information in front of you, as the attorney of the city, to make a determination. Would that be accurate?
It would be accurate to say that. I would prefer to talk about, to give you more information tomorrow, if you have a specific question, because I can't really respond, you know, I'm not going to weigh the evidence for you.
Right.
I think what's been proposed by staff is certainly defensible.
And that's the essence of my request, Mr. Chair. I know I didn't get a second, but that was the essence of my request, that in PLUM Committee, we would have ample time to drill down and answer once and for all, given the CEQA law, if these changes, in effect, does impact the historic element of a Southwest Museum, and therefore allow for this kind of action to forward.
I'd like to see some more opinion from, thoughtful opinion from our city attorney, not under a committee here, to look at that. I do think our marriage that we have, if I could call it a marriage, not everybody feels good about this marriage. And I think there's a lot of benefit to our marriage, as humans in this room, of education, of the Southwest, of its history. I do know, I do recall the fact that this offer of this collection, the site, was all transpired legally between what was the board for the Southwest Museum, and not a party to Los Angeles. That being said, Ed, I'm interested in the CEQA issue here, that with what is, what Recreation Park acted on, and I'll be happy to work on those other issues. Because I do think you not have been served as well as you should have been served, for whatever reason, okay, on that. I do think it's important to protect this collection. So with that being said...
Well, could I request, then, if we're not going to allow it to go to PLUM?
Right.
Or move it? Or maybe I'll do a motion later to that effect, but in the interim, given what your statements, Mr. City Attorney, could we have, give you more time, so by the time it comes to council, if I ask this question on the floor, would that give you ample time to give us a better perspective, or a clear perspective?
I believe we're going to council tomorrow, is that correct?
Right, we're going to council tomorrow.
So between now and tomorrow, I'll be in a better position than today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. So the motion is that we move that the evidence that has been supported determines that... So the motion is that we move that the evidence that has been supported determines that the project is exempt under CEQA. So if we could have a second, Mr. Wesson?
Yes.
So there's a second, that the evidence has been expected supports the determination that the project is exempt under CEQA. That's correct. Verbiage, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Because this is a new process for me, I wanted to make sure...
That is correct.
...that it's right. So, with that being said, no comment from Mr. Wesson or Mr. Reyes, we could vote on this.
Okay.
So, anybody opposed? Okay.
Myself?
Yes. Mr. Wesson? Aye, so two to one on this issue here. So that completes that item, and now we could take up the other item, item number three. Now take item number one.
Two.
Excuse me, excuse me. I apologize. So what is before us on item number one?
Item number two.
Two, excuse me. It's fall.
Item number two is a consideration of the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners' Action of May 20, 2011, Relative to the Proposed Renovations of Existing Exhibit Galerias, Outdoor Area, Restrooms, and Associated Improvements at the Autry National Center's Museum of the American West. On May 31, 2011, Council adopted motion, Weeza Reyes asserting jurisdiction over this matter pursuant to Charter Section 245. This item is being continued from the June 3, 2011 Special Meeting of the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee. This item is also scheduled for council on June 21, 2011, which is the last day for council action.
Thank you very much. Ms. Adams?
I'm Regina Adams, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks. As we had stated before, we believe that our Board took the appropriate and lawful action under its jurisdiction to have this project moved forward under Prop. 84 funds with the Autry Museum.
Thank you. You have anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
Any questions of staff at this time? This is really whether or not we recommend to the council, whether or not this ought to be taken and sent back to the Commission, not action done by that, not to reassign the grant, but to take action and send it back to the Commission. Okay, so we have some cards right here that I want to call on real quick. We're going to go one minute, since we all pretty much know what's going on right here. Clyde Williams, Carmela Gomez, Ed Casey, Tina Miller. Dr. Williams, please.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Cerrino, Northeast LA, also a member of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council. And the council board members generally would support recension of the board action and send it back.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm finished yet.
Okay.
Thank you. I am also a member of the Autry National Center. However, if you look at the drawings that they have right now, and if you go and look at the building right now, it's not in accordance with the submissions that were made for the proposed new additions. It also is a matter that it does not reflect the original plan, the existing facilities. So therefore, it should be a matter that assembled, here's the as-built of the original, here's the current, here's what's proposed, but that's not done. So the project description is inadequate. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Carmela Gomez, President Highland Park Heritage Trust, speaking against this proposal. There's a...I'm confused. It says there's no fiscal impact statement has been submitted for this project. I personally find that difficult to understand. For at least the last two years, there have been signs placed on the Golden State and Ventura freeways that read Autry National Center Museums, in the plural. If that's...if those signs don't trigger a financial impact on the Southwest Museum and the Northeast communities, then I am totally unknowledgeable about what those words mean. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tina Glada Miller, Gavanza Improvement Association, I'm against this proposal.
What you're for is, you're against the proposal and you want it to stand, you want the grant to go, or hold the time, Mr. Clerk, so people don't get confused. Either you're asking us to send it to the Park Commission to reconsider it or not.
To reconsider it.
Yeah, that's what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, you could keep going, Ms. Miller, I wanted to make sure...
I see.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Casey?
Real briefly, the issue on this item is whether or not it's a consent under a ground lease. That contract provides that the city must provide consent if it's reasonably to do so. In other words, it cannot withhold consent unreasonably. The subject matter of that ground lease is the Griffith Park facility only. Here, we're doing interior improvements to that facility, and we'll continue the same use, a museum use. And of those facts, consent should be provided.
Thank you. Dr. Stan Moore, Jesse Rojas, Daniel Wright, Mark Kenyon.
As a member of the Steering Committee of the Southwest Museum Coalition, we are over 70 organizations. At last count that I'm aware of, we had at least 11 neighborhood councils opposing the death of the Southwest Museum, and I really fear that this is what is happening. Jesus in the New Testament is quoted as saying that the powers of darkness are often wiser than the children of light. And I think that what has happened here has been a long-term, step-by-step effort by the Autry to steal the museums, Southwest Museum's artifacts, and in two years, they'll be able to sell off any that they want, and I think that we will find out, to our chagrin, that we have been stupid and misled.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rojas?
Thank you. Good morning, council members, and thank you for letting us speak on behalf of the Northeast area. And we want to express our concern about the Southwest Museum. It's very important, because since the business association, the chambers, it's very important to bring the business in our community and believe it is a viable museum to be open and considered, because they can develop, economic development in the area. It's not happening. This area is survival, it has all the transportation they need, they have the goal line, they have the freeway, they have all the access to get to the museum. Unfortunately, other people consider this not viable, because they see that the committee is not worth it. Yes, it's worth it. Our committee is worth like everybody else, we pay taxes like everybody else, and I think so we, our Northeast area is very important to consider, because it's a part of this whole community of Los Angeles, is one of the oldest community, we believe we deserve better. Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. Mark?
Thank you. Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Mark Kenyon, and the only point I wanted to talk on this item was the one that Mr. Casey just brought up on whether it's reasonable or unreasonably withheld, and just point out that if, in fact, the issue that Councilmember Reyes was trying to do, which is try to understand the historical, whether, you know, how CEQA handles the historical impact, if that's true, then the city is violating, will be violating its general plan, and therefore, by approving this, you will have, or by denying the Autry their project, you would not have unreasonably withheld your comment. And then lastly, I just want to say that if, in the end, the Autry loses the $6.6 million, they will have only themselves to blame, because they, you know, here, the homeowners' alliance, which I represent, is here at the table today. We have been at the table since 2002, before the merger. We want to work with these people, but we are not going to take being stabbed in the back. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wright?
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard. Consistent with the 7,000 people who signed petitions supporting a restrictive condition on the Southwest Museum, I urge you to send this back to the Reckon Parks Commission. A reason, the reason I would offer is that Mr. Barry Sanders is a former partner of Latham and Watkins. He was determined by the City Attorney to have a conflict of interest under Section 1090 in 2007, 2009. The mere fact that Latham might not be representing Autry in subsequent years doesn't mean that Mr. Sanders loses a common law conflict of interest because of his prior involvement in this issue. We defeated that project back then, and this was essentially his retribution. And consistent with Clark versus City of Hermosa Beach, he had a significant conflict of interest under the common law that disqualified his participation in the decision, and therefore it will be invalid.
Thank you very much. Charles Fisher, Nicole Prosser, Martha Benedict, and Ann Waldem.
Good morning again. Charlie Fisher, 140 South Avenue, 57, Highland Park. We support the return of this to the Reckon Parks Commission, basically because we believe, legitimately, that the CEQA law was not held properly at that time. There was the issue of inadequate notification, which is the reason this thing really passed. But the important thing is, we want, I don't begrudge the grant to the Autry. We just want the City of Los Angeles, as part of that grant, to get in writing from the Autry a guarantee that the Southwest Museum will be used. The Autry talks about their plans for the Southwest Museum, their vision for the Southwest Museum, but they won't make a formal commitment. And that's all we're asking, is that formal commitment be made.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Nicole Prosser, 124 Roseland Place, Highland Park. I think that Mr. Casey's statement about an unreasonable delay is really exactly our point. There is reason to delay the approval of this project, and we would ask you to send it back to the Commission and do a complete report that includes all of the issues that we have discussed today, including the lease amendment, even though there seems to be some dispute. We really don't want the project to be piecemealed, in terms of then coming back later and asking for a lease amendment. We also don't want the project itself to be piecemealed, as the appeal has pointed out, and also, the general plan consistency is critical, and we ask that that is a reasonable way for you to deny the project today, send it back to the Commission, and have all of the facts come out and be heard properly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Martha?
I'm Martha Benedict, and I urge you to send this back to Reckon Parks to reconsider all of the impacts that this would have, this project would have, on the entire city of Los Angeles, not just its impact on Griffith Park, but on the community of Northeast Los Angeles. This is the jewel of Northeast Los Angeles. It's our visual symbol, and I don't want to see it gone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ann?
Ann Waldem, 755 Crane Boulevard, Los Angeles 965. I heard some interesting testimony from Autry employees about Southwest Museum programs. Mr. Greenberg talked about a relatively small junior docent program at Casa de Adobe and the Las Posadas, which they presented annually. Nobody knew about the Las Posadas. The Casa has virtually been closed to the general public. The museum itself was not able to participate in the Museum of the Arroyos Day. The last public programming at the museum were monthly programs, very little programming all of the time of the Autry's tenure. The most promising program was one that Pamela Hanna initiated. She had the museum participate in an art gallery, a second Saturday program, and that was very effective, and I thank her for that.
Thank you, Ann. Isaac K. Numa Delarena?
Kenya.
Yeah, okay. Joe Young, Anna Kubas. That completes the cards. Excuse me. Norma Delarena?
Delapena.
Delapena.
P.E.N.A.
Okay, okay, I got to get better glasses.
Mr. Labangi.
Labangi, but you could do that.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Norma Delapena, and I'm a teacher, retired teacher, as well as a current part-time instructor. I've taught at various colleges in the area, in LA City area, and I'm a teacher and have been a teacher of English. I'm native-born, third, fourth generation, from out of state, moved to California for a better life with my family. I'm for multiculturalism also, and I value that aspect. In terms of as a teacher of English, we teach about the different cultures also, in the reading and writing, so that no one feels left out. Everyone's self-image is maintained, so no one feels he or she is more important than anyone else. So we have all cultures, Anglo-American, Latino, Asian, African-American. At LA City, I've taught students from Russia, Germany, Austria, all over, and France, different cultures. What I would like to see is, only if the grant allows that the current location of the Southwest Museum with its artifacts of Native Americans stay in its local community and its original post, should that grant be allowed to continue, because it's not fair then, and it's not, it's, again, taking away from the local community who have had it there for many years, and the residents of Los Angeles and LA County should also have a chance to see the original Southwest Museum and its surrounding community, some of which is not of the highest caliber.
Thank you very much.
In terms of economic, very rich in terms of culture and spirit.
I got the history.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, committee members. My name is Joe Young, and I live at 12551 Presnel Street in LA 90066. I've come to make a positive comment. I wish the best of success to the Autry and to all concerned with this matter. I call upon the Autry to fulfill its commitment to the Southwest Museum, to upgrade it and restore it to its glorious past and make it a beautiful operational place to be enjoyed by the public to the extent feasible. I call upon the community to work with the Autry to fulfill this dream. And last, I call upon this committee to hold everyone's feet to the fire and make sure they all work sincerely to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. Ms. Kubas?
Hi. Good morning, council members. Anna Kubas, Chief of Staff to Councilmember Jose Weeza. I'd like to address two issues today. One has to deal with, has to do with the lease extension that's been discussed, and the second one with the letter that the Autry provided you. On the matter of the lease, my office had a very fruitful conversation with Mr. De Leon's office, Senator De Leon, who's the author of Prop. 84, and it became clear to my office that, according to their understanding, there is a requirement for the grantees to provide proof that they have a 30-year lease. Now, I'm hoping that they could provide that in writing to the City Council today or tomorrow, or have a representative from the state provide that verbally to the City Council. And it raises a question for Councilmember Weeza as to whether the report that the Commission approved is, in fact, complete or incomplete without a conversation on the lease extension. The letter that I provided you is a letter that was included in the application provided by the Autry regarding the lease extension. In it, the department says that the Department of Reckon Parks currently would be favorably disposed to extending the term of the lease. Now, does the department have the authority to provide that extension to the Autry without the City Council acting on it? So, the fear is, based upon what the state has said through Senator Kevin De Leon's office, is, in fact, the city in jeopardy of losing that grant? Should that Commission action be revised to include approval for the lease extension? So that's a question that our office has. There is a dispute. I know the Autry has mentioned that they have conversations or letters from the state saying that they do not require the 30-year lease. That's not the conversations that we have had. On the matter of the letter that the Autry submitted, Councilmember Weeza has had numerous discussions and conversations with the Autry, along with other partners, Oxy and some others, in the hopes of creating a partnership, so that we can reopen the Southwest Museum. They have been good and fruitful conversations. The council member did ask the Autry to put in writing their intentions with regard to the Southwest Museum. The letter that they provided, we thought, was a draft letter, and I understand they submitted it for the record, but it does not address the spirit of the conversations and the partnerships that were being held. In fact, it does come up short. I'm glad that they've submitted it, because that way we can have a better understanding of what is the Autry's intention with regard to the Southwest Museum. So my final point regarding the lease extension and the Commission action... So my final point regarding the lease extension and the commission action is, we really need to have clarity from the city and the state as to whether the grant is in jeopardy if we do not deal with the lease extension matter. In the way that the state has informed me needs to be dealt with.
Thank you very much. For the record, I saw the senator 10 days ago or more, and he hasn't contacted me, which he have, but for the record, we have that there. Any questions, Mr. Reyes?
No questions. Are we closing now?
I think we're good.
Okay. The, to me, quite frankly, growing up in Northeast Los Angeles, it's painful to see this level of tension over something that we all want to see open. I think the process in and of itself, I'm hoping the future will bear the type of discourse that allows us to see the building open eventually. The letter that I read that was referred to does not seem to have the same level of, of, how can I put this, partnership, if you will, given, the give and take of the assets that are in front of us. And that, to me, is worrisome. I like to see ourselves as one city. I know it's hard to put into perspective those of us who grew up in Cypress Park, in Highland Park, in Lincoln Heights, those of us who see 40% dropout rates in our neighborhoods, those of us who know neighbors, friends, relatives, who are doing life in prison, who are in tough situations in families economically, and what that museum means to us. I know it's difficult because you've got to live in our shoes, understand what this means. So I'm hoping that that level of understanding could demonstrate itself in how we move forward in this agreement. I hope we can see that museum open up for what it should be, and I do not want to deny the City of LA 6.6 million. I know the Autry Museum has done tremendous work at many different levels for this great city, and I thank them for that.
We do.
This is not Cowboys versus Indians, as I was said before in the past in hearings. It has nothing to do with that. It has more to do with what we're doing to ourselves as a city. And it's a shame to see the museum closing down and being shut down for at least three years now. So that is my intent, is to be supportive of every institution, but know very well that there are some accountability issues that need to be addressed, and I hold firm in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No, I just want to say this, that I know this is a very emotional item, issue. The one thing that I would like to see is that there be some kind of guarantee in writing that elevates Mr. Wezar's comfort level. And I would have to believe that with all of these smart folks from the Autry, that you could meet with his office and come up with something that works for him, especially when you say your commitment is to ensure that there's some kind of an exhibit collection activity or what have you going. So I would like to at least urge you to go back and try, I mean, I understand what Mr. Wezar is trying to do, and, and I understand concern shared by Mr. Reyes. I think you can get beyond this, but I would urge you to quickly try to come up with some language that satisfies Mr. Wezar.
Okay, members? So this is the last statement. I just wanted to make sure it's clear that for the record, my recommendation would be to disapprove of the actions of the Board of Recreation and Parks and move the matter to full counsel.
Well, you got to get a second for that, but, so I got another recommendation, so we're going to worry about that. But for the record, it's been a good morning, okay? Tomorrow summer will come. We're leaving spring, and I hope this action springs us into working together. And not just Mr. Wezar. Mr. Wezar has to work with all of us. I worked with Mr. Wezar on issues of El Pueblo, and we haven't achieved success there yet. And I want to help you find, find success. Some of you I've known for many years of my career, but also with the opportunity that exists for the Autry National Center, which has worked with the board of then the Southwest Museum, they created this merger, and that merger now allows them to apply for a grant. And what is before us is the actions concerning a grant. And with that grant comes the opportunity to enhance their museum, which is an educational institute. So I move that we support the action of the Recreation and Parks Commission that were taken on May 20th, 2011 to accept the grant thereby given by the State of California of $6,593,463. Have a second on that? I would support that. So we have a second on that motion. So, and no second on your motion. So we will call for the question, and the question, call the roll for the record.
Okay. Councilmember Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
Councilmember Labang?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes?
No.
No. Okay, now, that is then will be a recommendation to the city council. We've had two major public hearings on this issue here. It will be in council tomorrow. Also, we do have four cards that I just want to read the name that were not marked. If anyone did want to make general comments, Jesse Rojas, Janet Dotsons, David Wright, or Clyde Williams, general comment. Does anybody want to say anything or want to waive their comment? So, so they waived the comment. So with that being said, this matter now is concluded. Thank you all for your participation. Thank you.